Item ten, the Improvement Plan. I call upon Paul Jordan to speak to this, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I appear to present this paper, the Stage Two Improvement Plan 2016/2017. The publication of the annual Improvement Plan is required to be placed on all local authorities. This plan allows us the opportunity to evaluate our progress against the objectives set for the 2016/2017 by the previous council and to understand how well we perform against nationally-defined performance measures. It doesn't set any future direction or commitment. Each objective provides a detailed evaluation of performance. Overall, three of our five improvement objectives have been evaluated as making good progress and two objectives as making adequate progress. Our four Select Committees scrutinised this achievement in the improvement objectives during the year and scrutinised the year-end performance in July. As scrutiny has been undertaken, there's no need to look at the details of the improvement objective section in the plan today. Members present at those meetings also had the opportunity to review the broader range of performance indicators. Today is the first time that council will have had the opportunity to view the full dataset alongside the latest comparative information for other councils in Wales, which was published last week. Overall, this dataset shows that we're still one of the top-performing councils in Wales. The unofficial league table puts a second behind the veil of Glamorgan. This shows that many service areas are performing well, but we recognise that there are areas where we need to improve. We recognise that we've declined, and that includes in disabled facilities grants, although we have in this year invested a very substantial additional amount of money in that area. So if we looked at it today, we would be in a very much better position. There's affordable housing. Whilst we've improved, we're still in the bottom quartile and we have declining visits to leisure centres and the Monmouth leisure centre and the pool issue there is significant, although I would say at this stage that even though it has declined, there's still more than 686,000 visits to leisure centres in the last year. Having seen what we're not all that good at, I would draw members' attention to the fact that we are in fact good at very many things, including amongst others, the percentage of final statements for SEN needs issues within 26 weeks, where we're top of the league; the percentage of pupils attending both primary schools and secondary schools, again, both at the top of the league; and the percentage of pupils aged 15 at the preceding 31st of August in schools maintained by our authority, achieving Level Two threshold GCSEs A to C in English and Welsh as a first language. So we are good at many things. The plan provides a lot of further information on the council's performance for approval by council today, but I would ask members to follow the recommendation that the Stage Two Improvement Plan for 2016 be approved, subject to any final amendments here today. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Jordan.
Yes, three questions, if I may, Madam Chairman. One is on housing. Now, I know housing is under one of the banner things, do it out of our county to thrive, but I wonder, is it time to move housing to its own distinct, broader topic, given it's the issues Monmouthshire are now facing with housing? House values are rocketing, that's not the council's fault, it's just a decision from about the bridges, which is mostly welcomed, but there are consequences we have to be aware of. And also, I've been told, well, I was informed a couple of days ago, it's up to 5,000 on the waiting list now for a house in Monmouthshire. We're not building enough homes, and I appreciate the Cabinet member said it's an improvement. I think it's an improvement of two houses. Not much of an improvement, really. And I wonder if now we need to really start focusing on that area, given the wellbeing goals, given housing is central to any child's life of security and making sure they do thrive, surely now it's got to have its own kind of area to focus on, real focus on, not kind of broad swaths, just a real focus on, a kind of focus on key targets that we should be looking at. I just put it out there for us as a question, really. The second one's sort of related, and maybe, maybe housing maybe should come under this, but given there's a Cabinet member for social justice now, and given that was meant to align, I presume, and a Cabinet member will surely correct me, with a Well-being Act to an extent, is there's an attempt to develop key measures for that portfolio. And given the Well-being Act, should that not form part of the Improvement Plan now? Were those measures that are eventually decided upon to judge social justice on, given that looking at it, and I went to the seminar, social justice portfolio and the aims and plans sort of really do tie in with the Well-being Act. And given the Improvement Plan seems to start focus more on the Well-being Act, should there not be sort of a rethinking about that, focusing on that portfolio, if not housing separately, and maybe housing comes underneath it? I don't know. I put it up there, to improve the Improvement Plan, which is a weird phrase. Obviously, there are indicators where we're not doing so well, and I focus on it every year, but the one point, and I'll make this point over and again, I'm not ashamed to make this point, is on key stage four FSM gap between the less well-off pupils and the more well-off pupils in Monmouthshire. The gap, again, is the most, the highest gap in Wales, second year in three years for basically young people getting decent GCSEs. And I know this is, I know this is discussed, the social justice, so I would see that as part of the key, the key target or indicator, or whatever you will, under a new Improvement Plan. So unusually for me, this is not really having a go, it's more suggesting really focused, targeted Improvement Plan, refocused and targeted indicators. And on that note, I know a decision hasn't been made, so that's probably the answer to this, but the alternative delivery model, and I only ask this, if, if we move to such a model, given leisure centres and museums and youth service, I know it's not all the youth service, but some of the youth service, is key to wellbeing in every manner of, how would that be accounted for in any of these indicators? How would we know improvement, or no improvement, would it not be accounted for?
First...
So Howard, can you ask a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to prove that I haven't come here with my grumpy face on, I noted the overall performance of the council as a whole, took some pride at how Monmouthshire performed, being one of the two top performers in Wales alongside the Vale. So I would like to thank Paul, the senior leadership team and the officers for putting us there, which, given our resources, is extremely difficult. A note with interest, councillor Petroni's point about affordable housing, and it's an issue which, to be fair, he champions frequently. I can't help rationalising that against his view on the previous LDP, which he didn't support, and the fact that affordable housing is by and large delivered on the back of housing developments. So I'll be interested then to see how his views might change when it comes to the review of the LDP.
Point of personal clarification, the Labour group voted for more affordable housing, which was voted down by the Conservative group.
That's very kind of councillor Petroni, but of course, it's all very well arguing for a better, a higher percentage if you then don't support the developments and the candidate sites that are up for debate. Okay, well, the three questions are...
Just carry on, yes, please, madam.
Madam Chair, thank you. And only two about planning. On page 194, and I'm looking at the numbers on the bottom of the, or rather, they're actually on the side, aren't they, the side of each page, improvement objective three, page 194 is a sill in the LDP, and particularly about the SPG for Tourism and Household Design, when are we looking to work on this, given that they have been allocated a higher priority on the SPG's schedule for 1617, and particularly the economic benefit of the tourism? On page 195, environmental improvements, noting the vacancy rates in Abegavenny and Cardiff Art, and that they've actually increased in the town centres. What do you think this means for the LDP review and how we choose to allocate land uses in town centres? And then the third question is on page 215, and it's the national performance indicators, and it's THS/007. And I wonder what the relevance of the bus pass indicator is in terms of the council's performance, when in this county and other rural Welsh authorities, that there's rather limited choice in any options for those who might be eligible for a bus pass. I can remember some years ago, my parents retired and got their bus pass, and they decided to try and use it for a trip to Cardiff, and I think it took well over two hours, and they went to places they'd never heard of before and probably never hear of again. So it's a lack of convenience. Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Sir Jordan, do you want to reply to those two?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for those questions, Dimitri. So far as the actual publication of figures are concerned, under the Local Government Wales Measure 2009, it's likely that, the format of this type of report is likely to change, and Matt will have a few words in due course. So far as housing is concerned, we are about to review the local development plan, and the issues with regard to affordable housing is obviously going to play a very large part of that LDP. And Sarah may want to have a few words about the issues to do with social justice. So far as councillor Howard's comments are concerned with the CIL, that's up for review as we speak, I understand.
So councillor Sarah Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yeah, just very briefly, I mean, just firstly, without digressing too much, just want to say thank you to the members that did come to the briefing session on Monday. This is an evolving piece in terms of the social justice strategy, and all your contributions were really welcome. And yes, of course, this is a backward-looking document, if you like. In terms of what's going forward, of course, those measures that we'll identify through the social justice strategy will be incorporated into the next performance indicators. So we'll be able to reflect on those. Obviously, at national level, that's slightly different, given that we are the only council with a social justice brief, so in terms of having set measures in that. But in our own local performance indicators, yes, that will reflect on the social justice strategy.
Thanks for the report. It was an honest account. It suggests that we are performing average to good, but certainly not excellent to outstanding, and that's probably because of the expectations we place on ourselves here. Obviously, the primary barrier to continuous development is the lack of funding. And I want to ask questions about funding, because your performance report will influence and lead into the budget that you're going to set next year, and therefore your forward working programme. So it says in the report, budget in real terms is decreased every year, and demands and expectations every year are on the increase. So my fear is the situation, it just isn't sustainable as we are now. We struggle, I think, to keep status quo, never mind demonstrate continuous improvements, although we do try. When I look at how we look at our funding or manage the budget, efficiency savings. It's true, Monmouthshire has reviewed, redesigned, reinvented services in order to release those efficiency savings, and they've done a brilliant job, but I do believe we're at saturation point, because any more slimming down will have an impact on the quality of our services. We've also got to bear in mind that we have failed to deliver 33% of this year's mandated savings, and apparently we are approaching £1 million worth of unachievable, if you like, savings, and that debt is going to roll on to next year. Income generation, that's another area. I do think we struggle here. It's true to say we've got a poor track record of making money in this council, and we have had examples where we've actually lost money in our attempt to make money. So I certainly wouldn't want to rely on our ability to income generate to balance the books. Reserves, I think we just can't keep dipping into the reserves, it's becoming a very shallow pool now, so I think that option is running out. Borrowing, apparently, I understand that we're nearly maxed out on our borrowing abilities. There is a ceiling, and also, you've got to remember, when we borrow, we're handing debt on to future generations. I guess by painting this bleak picture, many councillors have highlighted that in some areas we've overspent, schools are in deficit, we can't make the predicted savings that we were hoping to make. I'm painting this bleak picture because I'm seeing that we can't keep the status quo, we cannot continue as we are. It is a struggle, it's just to stay as we are. To me, to my mind, there are three options. It seems to me that we've got to pray and hope that the Welsh Government might just give us a little bit more money. Well, good luck with that one. I think we're going to have to have a mountain of faith to hope for that miracle to come about. The second option, ooh, dirty word, perhaps increase council tax to afford the status quo, could be an option. The third one could be that we just grasp the nettle and accept that Monmouthshire cannot do it all, that Monmouthshire cannot afford to run all the services, and if you like, keep all the plates spinning, because that's what you've tried to do with some success, but I think we're at a critical point now. So the question to the Cabinet members, but also to councillor Fox, I know the budget is coming up, but what is your plan for the next budget? Because we can't keep going the way we're going, we can't do more of the same, and if we were to look at option three, what services would be on the at-risk list? Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Fox, do you want to answer that before councillor Grocott comes in?
I do my way to my turn, and I'll...
Wait at the end, righto. Councillor Grocott.
Thank you, Chair. Continuous improvement. Councillor Petroni has already talked about what it's like to not have a roof over your head, and there are thousands of people in that position in this county. I wonder if I could take it to the next step and talk about our schools, because it seems to me the quality of life is really, the quality of our education is a major part of that. Looking at our schools, every year now, they are facing increased national insurance contributions, they are facing increased pay awards for staff, they are making cut after cut. The school where, I've already declared an interest, currently a third of a million pounds in the red, and one suggestion to help the school over that was that they should reorganise their teaching and learning. Chair, they have done that twice already. They have already cut staff, both teaching and support. And from January, members of the senior leadership team are actually voluntarily taking a pay reduction. How is that supporting continual improvement when that school is still a third of a million pounds in the red, and yet its performance is putting it among the best in Wales? It cannot continue to be at that level if further cuts are made. Continuous improvement for the people in my ward, who were told two weeks ago that their bus service was being withdrawn, and that is in one of the most deprived communities in the county. There are no subsidised bus services, as I understand it, in Monmouthshire, and for the sake of a small investment, a vital route could be lost. So yes, we have the need for continuous improvement, and I think that we have to acknowledge what the Cabinet Minister has said. At the moment, there are many positive indicators, but I would say we're hanging over the cliff edge by our fingertips. And unless we can actually increase support and investment into our public services, and certainly into our schools, then within a very short time, those figures for continual improvement are going to come crashing down around our ears. We need to invest more in public service.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I wanted to pick up on the point that councillor Petroni made very well, but first of all, if I can just comment on councillor Grocott's comments just now. I think there are some very real challenges in our schools that we need to recognise. We are, we remain one of the very worst-funded councils in the entire country. We are passing on as much of the school budget as we can on to schools, but of course, you know, we're going to be looking very closely at the settlement we're expecting in the next few weeks, and we want to deliver as much money as we can to the classroom. But despite the challenges that schools are facing, and we discussed this a little bit earlier, we are performing incredibly well compared to other local authorities in the country. We remain in first place out of 22 authorities at foundation phase, first at key stage two, second at key stage three. Provisional data for key stage four this year is very, very strong for us. And of course, this year, for the first time, we've achieved 100% at the pass rate for two passes or equivalent at A level, which is fantastic. We are doing well, but we've got some massive challenges there. But I wanted to pick up on what councillor Petroni made, because there is a concern about the gap between the outcomes of students who are eligible for free school meals and those who are not. Now, we welcome news that, according to these figures, which, and I must give you a health warning, these are the figures for academic year 1516, they're also very, very small numbers that we're talking about. We're talking about some schools which have got 10 or fewer students who are eligible for free school meals. So you do get considerable volatility in these figures. But these figures do show that the gap has narrowed at key stage two and key stage three, that's something we welcome. The gap has widened at foundation phase and at key stage four, partly due to an improvement amongst those who are not eligible for free school meals. And we've been very clear as an administration that we must do more to ensure that every child has the opportunity to fulfil their potential. No child should be held back by the finances of their parents. We've been very clear about that, so we've got more work to do. But I must say, if you look at the provisional outcomes for this year across Wales for students who are eligible for free school meals, they are extremely worrying. The Welsh Government has made changes to the curriculum, which appear, based on this provisional data, to penalise students from the more deprived backgrounds. You look at local authorities in more deprived areas and their performance at the Level Two inclusive, they've fallen enormously. I am really concerned, and I've had meetings with other Cabinet members across Wales, we're really concerned that the Welsh Government has delivered changes to the curriculum which could hold back the ambitions of some of the poorest and most deprived young people in our country, and that's not on.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to offer maybe a fourth option to councillor Lakeborough. From the Economic Development Select Committee the other day, I was astounded to learn that the council has no individual responsible for trying to find savings, for reviewing things such as long-term procurement contracts. In fact, I think the entire committee was astounded to find this, as such a position would pay for itself in savings quite quickly. So when you talk about continual improvement, if you want to find improvements, you have to put somebody in charge of finding the improvements. So I would urge the council to look at appointing somebody to that post on behalf of the Economic Development Select Committee, who all agree with me, at some point in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss, thank you, Madam Chairman. Almost, this is almost resembling the budget meeting we'll have later on, but it's healthy debate, and some good points flowing from it. And first of all, can I welcome Dimitri, your constructive approach to this debate this year, which is welcome, and I do value your contributions around the evolving portfolio of social justice. As Sarah said, it's the only authority in Wales that has got a social justice portfolio and a cabinet just focusing on that area, and for a party which is supposed to not have any great views on social justice, I think that's a step forward, and we're perhaps to prove and break some of those perceptions. And I know Sarah has shared, and I'll be working with her, we need to look about how we're going to refocus that Improvement Plan, I'm sure, so we can pick up some of the measures around some of those things we want to see improvement in. Because I absolutely agree, we do want to see improvement in that social, in that social inclusion agenda and the breadth of what it contains. And there's an awful lot in there, as we touched on briefly at the seminar the other day. And you know, you make good, valid points also, Dimitri, about how we're going to measure things like the ADM, if it comes in and going forward. And I think, absolutely, I haven't got the answers for all of that yet, and we do need to sit down and make sure the Improvement Plan reflects properly our changing, the changing dynamic and shape of this council going forward, because as Debbie says very clearly, we can't keep doing the same old thing. And Debbie, I absolutely agree, you know, there's no point praying to Wales Government. Some of the issues that Martin just alluded to in King Henry, as Will described early on in the conversation, are down to the pressures of post-16, funding being slashed by Wales Government to our schools, putting immense pressure on lower schools as well, because many secondary schools support their lower school through their, through their post-16 funding. So yes, it's, so it's no point praying, we're not going to get too much joy there. Increasing in council, increasing council tax, obviously, we're going to need to start conversations around the budget setting, or rather, medium-term financial planning assumptions in near future, and we'll be taking consideration of all things in the round, albeit they would only ever be assumptions at that stage. But, you know, council tax is a difficult thing to make a decision on, to level that cost on every constituent in the county to pay for various things that they may never, never use. So you can't do it lightly. I know that Deb has been an advocate of raising council tax for some years, but we don't necessarily think that is always the answer. It's interesting when we hear lots of things about, you know, telling us what we already know, about how things are on the edge, and that we do know that, and we do need to find solutions to do things and retain, retain those locally accessible services and keep them as strong as possible. And we look at every way we can to do that. But it's no good, you know, just one hand saying what, you know, things aren't going to manage, and on the other hand, somebody saying what they want additional, you know. We've got to find, be a bit more mature on that, and find solutions which are going to be sustainable going forward. And I generally think that some of what Mark Drayford is suggesting with the regional agenda, be it at a health board sort of region or the wider region, may start answering some of the longer-term solutions. I don't know, but we need to explore the opportunities of economies of scale, of working together in a collective way to provide good services across the county, pooling our expertise so we can access, especially small authorities, access some of that and find different ways. And Jess makes a good point about procurement. I need to challenge, perhaps, officers might want to come in and reflect a little bit on what are we doing in long-term procurement contracts, and how are we hunting those down, or, you know, is the scope within the procurement side? All these things are really important discussions and important things which we'll need to discuss further when we come to set the budget, and I hope we have as a constructive way forward at that point. But we must, let's go back to the point we've got here. We recognise that there are still areas that we are not performing well enough in. These are improvement indicators for last year. We know, for instance, the disabled facilities grants, you know, was an issue, and fair play, Dimitri, you raised that, and it's something we also felt, and we also, we tried to address that now, and hopefully, we are addressing it through an increased investment in that area, and I think, as it was alluded to earlier, that we would see, we're going to see marked improvement through that further investment. You know, there are other areas where we're not doing so well. Some of those indicators I'm not so worried about, but I am worried about some of them we should be doing better. But I'm also going to help celebrate some of the good things we're doing. I'm not going to go into them specifically, but we are one of the second best, well, we are one of, the second-best performing authority in Wales on these indicators. And, you know, we can't, we've got to recognise that. It may be a difficult thing sometimes over that side of the chamber to recognise, but we're doing it on a shoestring. It's really difficult. But that shows what good leadership, good management and great officers can deliver, and that's where we've got to try and find solutions going forward which can sustain those priorities which are so important to us, education, protecting the vulnerable, you know, creating jobs and preserving locally accessible services. So I hope we can come together constructively when we put the budgets and our budget options together, so we can get over some of those things. But not everything is going to be done fantastically going forward. How can it be when you've all acknowledged that you're going to have a shrinking resource? We've got to... We've got to keep some things, we'll suffer, I'm sure, going forward, but we want to try and keep them there. It's easy to cut things away, we've said this before. You know, we could put a proposition to cut several areas of service delivery away if we wanted to make some big savings of cash, but that would immediately contradict our priority of maintaining locally accessible services. So it's not going to be an easy ride going forward. I think what I'm heartened by is reasonable improvement results, but I'm never complacent. We need to continue, because if you don't strive for continuous improvement, you are going backwards, and we've still got a journey to go on.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm not going to get involved in any debate about whose fault it is that we are short of money and things like that. But what I am going to say is that, you know, my priority as a councillor is for the services that the residents of my ward get. And the fact is, we got what we got as far as finance is concerned, and we need to make this operation as efficient as it can possibly be. And we've spoken about procurement, which is one of the things that was raised in economy and development, but I'm sure there are lots of other things that can be looked at as well. And you have people within this council who have business experience, who are quite used to having to look at saving money, particularly in my background in the steel industry, we were continually on the crest of a trough, as it was. What I would say as a word of advice to people here is, because, you know, I find things quite frustrating, because I come from a background where decisions are made quite quickly, and that's certainly not the case in local government. But in terms of the need and the priorities that we have, and education is one of the council's priorities, so is social services, we can't afford to sit around for months and months debating these things. If we think these things need to be done and the officers are in favour of it, we need to get on and do it. Because I'm convinced that there is a lot of money to be saved, and that money can be pushed towards those services and those things that are all priority. And that doesn't mean making people redundant, there are lots of other things that can be done to save money besides making people redundant. I'd like to make a comment about the report, and here again, I'm going back to my background. There's a lot of comments here about behind targets, behind targets of measures of success. But what I'm not seeing is where is the project plan? What are the timescales? I understand that some things are open times, you can't put a time on it, but there are other things where surely we need to be able to look and say, well, that's our target. It may be that we've got to adjust that target, and anybody that's done a project will know that there are always times when you've got to move that target. But what I can't see from this report is, what are those targets? If I'm managing something, I want to be able to look at something and say, well, we targeted to have that ready by November two thousand and seventeen. Actually, there's a reason why it's not ready and we're going to move it. But I can't see that in this report, and it's that sort of detail that we need to concentrate on more when we are applying projects. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
To Thomas.
In response to councillor John's comments about the changes in the curriculum from Welsh Government, those changes are coming about from England, from Ofcall and the DFE. And in fact, their changes are harsher, in a sense, than what Welsh Government have pushed through. I speak from somebody who worked for the Welsh Exam Board. When those changes are going through, it disappoints me that children in Monmouthshire who are on free school meals, who are at the bottom end of the social spectrum, are really not getting a fair deal. If you look at the results closely, children who come from reasonably affluent and supportive homes will do well in school under the new system. Because the new system is going back to the linear system that probably, well, I did, and I'm sure a large number of people here did when they did their exams. But those exams are tougher if you are coming from a deprived background without the support of parents who are professionals, who know the system, who know how to offer support, or even offer support in terms of making a nice meal when you get home from school. If you're coming home from school and parents are not there to support you, they're not in a position to support you, then unfortunately the school has to step in. And one of my major concerns is that sort of drop in the performance of children who are in effect at the bottom end, and we've talked about it this afternoon, in terms of housing. If you live in a nice, comfortable house and it's warm and it's dry and you've got plenty of IT and your parents are professional, you should do well. I don't think anybody will argue with that. But when you're in a house where perhaps it's not the best accommodation, or perhaps you're in a bed and breakfast accommodation, or you're not in permanent accommodation, then doing exams is tough. Doing exams is tough anyway. We all know that, but if you've had children going through the system. So I think we really need to think about budgets. King Henry VIII is in councillor Grokert's ward, but many of the children from my ward go there. I taught there for many years, and I can see a decline, not due to the perseverance of the head and the staff, but in terms of decline of the budget. And at the end of the day, if we don't actually make an effort to invest in children, then really we're not making an effort to invest in our future. And in fact, if I were a child coming from a deprived background, I would prefer to be in somewhere like the city of Swansea or some of the other authorities where there is more deprivation, but it is highlighted much more clearly. We live in this sort of South Sea bubble here, where we think, well, yes, the children will do well, they come from affluent backgrounds, or they send them off to public school. Yes, great for them, but not great for those children who are not in a supportive situation.
Item ten-two, the capital budget for the provision of eastern recycling vehicles, that's been pulled because they haven't got enough of the information up together yet, and we'll come to the next council meeting. Item ten-four, because it's going to exclude the press and public, or we're going to ask for that, we thought it would be a better idea if we had the two questions from the councillors to... Go to eleven-one, councillor Petruany, your question.
As stated on the agenda, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Peter Fox.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I know Dimitri put this question to Phil Murphy, but obviously he's not there. I've been furnished with the information which perhaps will be helpful, I hope it will be helpful. So how many acres of council-owned land has been sold by the council in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, fifteen, sixteen, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen? I've got more of a collective response. The council has sold a total of a hundred and seventy point four-seven acres since two thousand and fourteen. The majority of this, some hundred and fifty-five acres, was the sale of two council farms. The total amount of land sold for housing purposes was six point zero eight acres, which will enable a construction of seventy-eight dwellings. And nine point zero five acres were sold for commercial development, and that was the, as the development in Caldercot. And also the Premier Inn Hotel in Monmouth, and then there was the Morrison's site in Abigavenny. Additionally, we know, we all know the estates team are currently working on the disposal of Rockfield Farm and Crick Road, as they were major LDP strategic sites, and hopefully they'll come to the fore in the near future. And the combined total of those two sites is sixty-one acres and will accommodate five hundred and twenty-one dwellings. Crick Road will be subject to a report to full council in November, and marketing for the sale of Rockfield Farm will commence in October.
I thank the leader for that response. I wondered if you could send it to me electronically, if you would. My supplementary is, how much of that, how many acreage have we sold under value for social economic reasons under the section one, two, three of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-six?
I haven't got a clue. But I'm sure somebody has. So perhaps, oh, Peter, did you want to? No? I'll let somebody answer, but we will make sure a written answer gets to you. But I'm sure officers are queuing up to come in here.
Thank you. Is that, all right? I'll do for now. The next question is from councillor Paul Pavier to councillor Peter Fox.
And, councillor Green, you're coming in. Yeah, thank you, councillor Pavier. And I do welcome, I think the council needs to welcome the question. It's only a shame, I think, perhaps we didn't have this more of a motion, because we could all contribute to the wider debate on infrastructural needs around the Chepstow area. And clearly, you know, there are a lot of things which we need to discuss there. But to outline what the activity has been from Monmouthshire, I'll give you some idea and perhaps a few further reflections of my own on top of some of these points. So first of all, the MCC's local transport plan set out key objectives to improve sustainable travel and traffic movement throughout the county. In addition, and more specific to Chepstow, there is an air quality monitoring working group which shares many of the objectives set out within the local transport plan and includes ambition for additional train and bus services from Chepstow, as well as the upgrading of cycling and walking links, which officers will shortly be going out to public consultation as part of the Welsh Government's Active Travel Act. To support the local transport plan, MCC has a strategic transport group, which we know, councillor Dovey chairs, which brings together members, officers and other partners to consider proposals and to monitor progress of such. And this group has been very successful at working with the train groups to run additional services as well as lobbying the train operators for further improvements as part of a review of rail franchises. And there's been a lot of specific things which I've been furnished with here, which I won't go through and read, but a massive amount of more specific benefits around Chepstow Rail, which has been achieved by the efforts, many of them flowing from the Transport Working Group. In addition to these objectives, MCC has been in discussions with the Forrester Dean and Gloucestershire County Council to explore the option of Chepstow bypass, with further meetings planned, I'm told, with the Welsh Government to seek support for funding to undertake a feasibility study. I think we all would welcome that. But I think that later point is really the crux of probably of where, Paul, you may want to come back with your second question, but I'm almost preempting that the big issue for most of us now who reside in the south recognise that, you know, with things that are coming about, things which are known a bit at the moment, things like bridge tolls being removed, the popularity of the area, we're seeing it already, the pressure on housing, we're seeing, you know, we're seeing opportunities being unlocked through the city deal which bring pressures and dilemmas to our corner of the county. And when you keep bringing those pressures, when those pressures come, there needs to be infrastructure eventually to match the need to service those things. And as we see more houses possibly coming in the area, certainly in the Gloucestershire quarter of Chepstow, we know that's going to put pressure on physical infrastructure, the A forty-eight clearly, and surrounding Rose, Pulmerick, all of those areas. So there needs to be a long-term solution. And sometimes I think we get to a tipping point, a tipping point where there is a requirement for more development, more opportunities manifest, and that's a tipping point to create further investment in infrastructure. I think we're at that point with the opportunities which are going to flow via the Seven Bridge, through the strategic perspectives of Cardiff Capital Region and the city deal, and the desire to have a deeper relationship across the water with the likes of Bristol and other things like that. There is a need, I think, for all of us who have an opportunity to influence at whatever level, to forward those conversations in a great pace, with great pace. And that means colleagues like myself working harder with colleagues across the water. But more so, I think, Wales Government having a mature conversation around how they treat the borders. Because I'm afraid borders seem to be no man's land often for the governments, because there's a clash in policy, and there's this bit in the middle which gets left, and nobody seems to be able to bridge it very well. And I think there is a, you know, that's something that, you know, cabinet secretaries in assembly, MPs, either side of the border, need to think seriously about coming together to think, well, hang on, you can't, you know, you have aspirations for a growing region where the gateway is a gateway to Wales, so how are we going to make that work? So, Paul, a bit of a roundabout answer, but I hope you gain from that, that whilst we haven't done enough, I think we're on a tipping point where we need to start doing a lot more, and I pledge to try and do more.
Do you have a supplementary, Paul? Paul, have you got a supplementary question, or are you making a speech?
Thank you, Paul. I'm sorry I stole some of your thunder perhaps on that, but the points are still very, very well made. I will undertake to do what I can. You know, whilst I welcome people's belief that I'm in a very elevated position, I wish I had all of the influence you believe I have, I will always try to forward things wherever I can. But I think this is where the whole debate around an emerging region needs to expand a little from where it's been focusing, because we have to think of the region now. Now we've got sort of governance and the structures and things in place, we need to start reaching out and stretching and seeing how, you know, let's look at the whole region. And, you know, the gateway, I've got to call it that, the gateway, the Seven Bridges in Bristol and Seven Side, the other side, you know, that is so fundamental, and we need to find a way to counter some of those challenges which are going to come into the corner. One of the key corners of the region, one of the key people now is also Brian, as our cabinet member for transport, because Brian also sits with ten other of his similar position on the Non-Statutory Transport Authority, which is working within the city region alongside Wales Government as well, to put forward the local government perspective of need and projects as well. And I asked Brian perhaps to also hear the messages here, which I know you have, and to take those back into that forum as well. I will perhaps liaise with you, Paul, to decide what is the best way, what's the best strategy, and on behalf of Chepstow members and the council, the best strategy of how we approach this. And perhaps, you know, this is worthy of a motion at some point, so we can debate it wider and everybody would have a lot of good points to contribute, I'm sure.
Thank you. Sorry, you can't come in on this, it's not a debatable thing. Sorry, David. We now, we need to exclude, if we can, the press and public from, if you're in agreement, sorry, to exclude the press and public from the meeting during the consideration of item ten-four as business on the grounds that they involve the likely disclosure of exempt information. Is that all right? Are you happy with that? Are you happy with that? All in favour? Let us shut the door now, please, and turn the...